Oh, it's gonna say now you are. You know.
I got the.
Doesn't work.
I got the snowballs. Why am I hearing my voice going into the?
Are we getting close?
Signal three.
Got it. Easier to do. Okay, are we ready?
A good doozy. I can't wait to tell them. I just thought of it.
Are we getting close to having that ready?
Yep, I just wanted to turn it so they could see everybody.
Okay.
It'll be good.
Do we have people online?
I think that's Cody that's on there, so.
That'd be it.
Okay, that's what it looks like.
So there's nobody else on?
Doesn't look like it.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Sorry, we're just a touch late. And we're going to open it up with public comments. If you would like to speak for public comment, each person has three minutes and it's their time alone and cannot be cast that time into someone else. If you have concerns or comments about individuals, those are not appropriate during public comment at the public comment time. So please don't say anything that would identify circumstances or a person or a group of people directly by what you say. Be respectful. People on Zoom are welcome to join the public comments. Just put your name in the chat. So is there anybody who would like to address the board? Please state your name, even though we know who you are.
I will. Hi, everybody. My name is Charmade Swan. I have two kiddos in the district and I live in the town of Washburn. I think I emailed about this. And so I want to say first off, thank you, whoever's been updating the online calendar, like I saw that the school board meeting was on that tonight. So who do I say thank you to?
Who?
Matt Larson.
So that because that was something I emailed, I think, a couple, like a last month about just having. I feel like I'm pretty engaged and I can never remember when the school board meetings are. And so I just really appreciate that those are in a few more places now. Because before you had to go to the district page and that's the place where they were. They weren't on the front page or on the online calendar. So appreciate that. The other thing, the idea that I had, and I brought a little sample of my idea, so I'm gonna pass it around. I'm, I guess I'm one of those people that I, I do print this printed calendar out and there's always this big space at the bottom that's unused. And I think that for those of us that do still print out the calendar and put it on your bulletin board at home or put it on your fridge or whatever. Because I think people get information in different ways. Sometimes you go to the website, sometimes you look on your home calendar, whatever. I think just even having a QR code that takes you right to the district information could just be a super easy. Again, just a way to plug people quickly to the, to the website. So I just, food for thought. I wanted to, to throw that out there. And then I guess the third thing I came, or maybe it's the second thing. I just have to say that I'm, and I don't know who actually is the best person to talk to about this, but from an academic standpoint, my own child is really struggling with the transition to the new math program in high school. And I just think that it's unfortunate that, or I don't, I don't even know the words to use, but I'm wondering, and I went to the website to see if there was a curriculum council meeting that I should come and talk to, but I couldn't find the curriculum committee meeting information. So just knowing, like, when curriculum changes happen and when parents, when you, when do you want to hear feedback and information from parents or students about, like, for example, that math curriculum at the ninth grade level, I think has been, it's been really not the smoothest transition. So thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments that they would like to make to them?
Hello, my name's Janice Cook. I have two kids in the school and I, yeah, I wanted to just take a moment after reviewing the agenda to address the board. I, my family and what I'm involved in is very sports oriented. So I do want to address the school board when it comes to approval of like the lacrosse, non-competitive sixth through 12th grade. I would encourage our school board to evaluate how we support kids through sports. Usually when it comes to things like lacrosse, a brand new sport that many of the students here haven't played at all, whether it be in gym class or anything that we have, it is really, really hard to pick up a sport and at 12th firsts anywhere, like high school level. So what I would encourage you to do is if you are going to implement more sport, if you've done it at a younger level, that's not something our school has, we always cut off at sixth grade and nothing else is really through the school. So if you're gonna introduce something new, especially like this, I don't think it should be at that high school level. So I guess also too, participation in sports is declining. So there are not as many athletes. So when you increase the number of sports that you have at a school, you're, you become subpar at most of what you're doing because the number of athletes that are around are limited. You have to fill a team, whether it be football, lacrosse, soccer, unit, basketball, softball, whatever it is, we don't have the students here and we're pulling them in three different options at a single season. I just encourage you guys to cautiously review that before approving, I guess. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else have comments that they would like to make to the board? We will move on. Approval of financial reports and bills?
Okay, so I reviewed the April 2024 financial reports and I'm just gonna give you a quick little heads up that June 30th is the end of our budget cycle, you know, just to kind of remind you guys right now, it seems like everything is gonna be right on track and we're looking forward to another like great budget cycle. But what I want to also just mention is that that doesn't happen without an amazing team. And so the administrative team and our financial director of the district just worked so hard together. They've, they've clearly have a track record of just amazing creative thinking, looking at all the options, spending the taxpayers money as widely as we can. We don't work with a lot of resources in a district like this as we're all learning about this referendum conversation. And I, every, every month I do this, I just, I get floored by the ability for that team to take in the information, even forecast the information and plan ahead and do everything that they possibly can to, to do it well. So just wanted to say that before we approve the financials for April 24.
And I concur. I've, I've seen the team work and they, it's a lot, a lot of work putting budgets together.
And then keeping it on track.
Yes. So thank you.
Keeping me on track.
Thank you, Janet. I'll make a motion to approve the, yeah, the financial reports and bills.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Meeting reports, long range planning.
Long range planning met on Monday. I apologize, I was only able to be there for about half of it. But the first half, we've been talking a lot about the survey that you just reviewed. You know, kind of talked about one out last week, the initial results that were coming in, got a lot of results and correct me if I'm wrong. But there was quite a lot of, well, I would say probably the, the amount coming back in to that point was a little less than what we thought we would be seeing at that time. But we saw a lot from the 45 plus age groups with no children, which I think is encouraging because it's, it's good to see those responses. The, I can't remember what the.
The goal number?
What the goal number was, but.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred.
Five hundred service. And where are we at right now?
Well, right now we're at 200 electronic, but we don't know how many were mailed in.
Okay.
And we won't know that until after the 17th of May.
Okay.
But, you know, we're continuing tonight, getting information out. More marketing, more information, newspaper reminders, blasts are gonna continue to go out to, to try to get people to take those surveys. Another blast is gonna go out to parents who did not turn theirs in yet, because we know which ones. They'll get an email reminder that the second one already wound out to staff. So we're gonna continue to bombard the community. We just, again, we need that information. So 17th.
And, and we know that people thought surveys.
And there were some that were on a list that didn't.
He just gave you. It seems like a highway C didn't get their survey.
Yeah. And again, that's a call I have to the post office because the names I'm getting were on the list that we sent them. We're not sure why they're not getting there. But they were sent, they're not getting to the place. So that's a postal type question that we're following up. And anybody who needs them, just call, or if you have people calling, we'll run them, we run them right out to people. So.
Yeah, I don't even know how you would get word out that the surveys are out. And if you didn't get one, how to get it? Is there, is there any way to do?
We could probably do a Facebook blast.
Social media.
Social media.
There's, I've been posting a lot of things about the survey on social media. So I can very easily tonight after the meeting, I'll put something out that says if you have not received one, call the school and we'll make sure that we can get you one.
That's next Friday, right?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, yep.
But I think you said the majority of the responses were positive.
Positive. And it seems to be as they're coming in, it, nothing's really changing from that. It's, it's growing in the areas that we want to see it grow. Some really nice feedback from community members, really good split of people from across, good turnout from each of the areas, you know, Bayview and Barksdale. I mean, all of them have good numbers coming in right now. So it's, it's, I'm pleased with the how wide it is from the community coming in. And it's very positive.
And then I think the majority of the rest of the time that we, I was on for the meeting, we, we talked about our long range planning subcommittee work, which is next time.
Well, we might as well just go right into that.
Was there anything else?
A little bit about continuing to look at our web design and web. So I mean, that's something that still we want to continue to fine tune that to meet the needs of everybody in the community. And that's a work in progress. We've made some changes. There obviously there's other areas that we need to do a better job. I met with Matt. He's gonna continue to look at it over the summer. And, and again, it's as strong as it is the people putting stuff in. So what do we need to do with more professional development? How do we get scores from coaches that aren't on staff? So they're gonna continue to work. Shandor's gonna work with the coaches and get those things done. But we love hearing because then we can fix it, or at least look at other examples to make it better. But I think that was the only other thing that came up. Yeah.
Um, we talked about, we talked about.
Cell phones, that was a good conversation.
Yeah, yeah, really great conversation. And.
That's like how we're gonna get rid of.
No, it's, it's really just about, you know, like, how can we support the administrative team in whatever policy they implement and how we can make sure that kids have the utmost opportunity for growth mindset and for social interaction and for, you know, learning and supporting them. Like all of this is for the children, you know, to really like make sure that they have wonderful learning environments and healthy brains. So, yeah, so that was a great conversation that, that I'm sure will continue to have over the, like, over the summer months as we're preparing for the school year.
I think we had talked about possibly putting policy that talks about cell phone use as part of your, even though it might not be part of the next update, getting that on policy can. Because right now, it's at, right now, the policy says it's up to the individual teacher. That's what the, how the policy is written. But throw that one out there. So you have your two reads over the summer before school starts. So anything that's gonna change from the board policy, the buildings have time to implement before September.
So it's coming in July. Will it be in the policy committee in June? Is there a policy committee in June?
Well, it's not been set yet because Neola hasn't released it, but you should get a release sometime in June. A big one. Most of it'll be around Title IX that I've been talking to Ivy and Angie and Denise about because you'll have to have specific training in place before school starts and then a mandatory training for all staff at fall in service. So quite a bit of stuff. So you have a busy, busier policy time over the summer, especially around Title IX. Now it is getting challenged. But, you know, they can go with right now what's on the books and that's what's on the book. So.
Okay. All right. Long range planning subcommittee.
Okay, so in our board packet, you'll find the strategic goals and just kind of go over, we've got like kind of three main theme goals that we left specifically broad so that the building and the individual staff and teachers can come up with their goals to support those three themes. And there's a lot of topic areas. Basically, it was just a really great conversation to talk about where we have opportunities to improve. How to reach most kids, how to support every single kid in this, in this growth mindset. It's just been like between my financial reports last week and these strategic planning meetings and the long range planning, it's been an amazing, awesome week.
I would say of note is, you know, we kept all of the base concepts there, right, that were already there and just kind of massaged them a little bit, tweaked them, focused that.
Made them relevant to the time.
Right.
Including, but like one of the more essential components is this like professional learning community. And that's kind of like a foundation of how our instructional staff operates. And so that was really important to, to keep in there and keep on the forefront. It's just high levels of learning for every single student. And, yeah, and I think that we made a lot of adjustments to like, like, keep it relevant. And the draft is, we all agree, a little wordy. So we're gonna try and just like.
And what's in there currently is a draft from last week. So we met again last night. And so that updated draft, I think Denise will send out to the team and then can send to the board. So you can see the next version of it.
So the one that was in the shared drive was not.
That's updated. Correct, it's been updated as of last night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, you're right. And it's even, oh, yeah, that's not. What this means for the board is that when we do our goals, July 22nd, we will make them also smart goals according to the strategic plan.
And as Denise pointed out at the meeting, which was a good point, that's, that's a living document, you know, that, that moves with and grows with, you know, with the school, with the district as, as needed.
So the changes that you made last night, are they still kind of based on these three main?
Yep, just you can see there's, you know, there are some of them are left open, some of our big ideas, and we cleaned them up into more concise statements. But yeah.
Like maybe took out specific language around green and healthy, but really made it very inclusive, healthy, living. I can't remember the exact phrase, but it was, it was a little bit, a little bit more inclusive than just green and healthy.
That, that model.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like, I like that there was the, the streaming goals. That I think it's gonna be easier to work on.
Yeah, and each, each goal had four bullets, what, emphasis?
Priorities, yep.
Priorities.
Okay. All right. It looks good. Anything else with that? Any questions from anyone? Administrative reports?
I want to just start by commending our amazing staff. Their time and commitment that they put in to meet the needs and exceed the needs of kids each and every day. It's exciting to see them at work. I was at the elementary school. When did we get this blow up Gaga thing that would? Kind of cool, but I mean, and they just do amazing work. And especially coming over after, you know, a couple of years with all the chaos surrounding COVID, see them as resilient as they are, as, as passionate as they are. I just wanted to start by commending our amazing staff during staff appreciation weekend. Some of the little things that we did throughout the week, and maybe Heidi can just highlight some of those little gifts and we got a cash tree and a dunking tank. What do we got tomorrow? No, no, I'm in Nebraska.
Some gift cards and money trees tomorrow for winners. Everybody's name gets put in a drawing and they have students pick the names.
Snacks and treats.
Snacks and treats.
Flower seeds. And just I've been sharing the winners with the board as they are drawn. So just sharing what we do during the week, just thank them for their efforts every single day.
Read the names.
Yes, it is. I haven't won in 13 years, but I'm just saying. Keep our, I think there is. I think there is.
They hide that name.
All right. Keep your eye on Act 100 and Act 20 over the summer. It's just shenanigans in Madison. Their latest update we have is they might slow down the implementation of Act 20. That's not gonna slow down the efforts of the district to continue to have kids reading and improving our reading, reading scores. But you got one group now suing the governor's right to veto a section that was in an appropriation that wasn't supposed to be, they think. So keep your eye on that. Also, a lot of concern about the next two-year budget coming out of Madison election year. Things get cookie in election years. You'll have a lot of posturing, you'll hear a lot of things. Denise seems to be calm. I've always been calm. Just be calm. Wait till the dust settles. You got a really strong budget going in the next year. Some better news that we'll share in June with you in my report. But that could be a little chaotic. So you might not have a budget similar to what we've had in the past. You might not have it right away in the spring. It might go into the summer. So that's just going into it. It's normal. There's gonna be a lot of politics in the ball about what's gonna be in a budget and what's not gonna be in a budget. So they're already lining up Waza to start having listening sessions in August in anticipation of what's coming. So never in my years that we've done it that early before, or they've done it that early. So just things to watch on the two-year budget. Act 120, you'll get some Neola updates probably in June. Some mandatory trainings that I've been sharing with Denise and our transitions have been going, I think, really well. We, we talk regularly and she's got folders and lots of great questions and, and stuff. So I think she'll hit the ground running.
I think she's already been running.
She's running.
All right, I just have a couple of things that I'm gonna touch on from my, from my report. First, the graduation speaker, the kids would like to have Ms. Diane Tetner, who is a retired teacher. She's really excited about the possibility because she has been with these kids through kindergarten and then through different grade levels throughout their whole schooling career. So she is super excited about that opportunity. I, I think she'll do a fantastic job recognizing these kids at graduation. So they are excited about that. Summer school booklets have been printed and distributed. They're out. People are looking at them. They're looking at what classes they want to register for. We have a lot of great options this year. Registration for week one begins on May 15th at about 10 o'clock in the morning. Lisa and I will be working that to make sure that it is running smoothly. So outside of that, only other big thing is tomorrow we have our second annual spring signing day. So that is for all the kids who would be going into performing arts or playing sports in the post-secondary universities or colleges that they're going to. So that'll be tomorrow afternoon. So that's pretty exciting.
All right, elementary, we have lots of fun things happening throughout the month of May. So finance and performing arts week we had last week. And so we ended it with the children's theater performance of Rapunzel, which was fabulous. But throughout the week, that same group came into the classrooms and led opportunities for classes. And then actually local artists came into in a variety of fields like photography and, and painting and different things. So it was really great. This week we had the art show opened up. So we had the art show reception. So that's at the cultural center for the, throughout the month of May. It's wonderful. Every student who is in art has a piece of artwork on display. And then we have our spring concert tomorrow. So tomorrow afternoon, we'll be having each grade level perform from 4K through sixth grade exploratory music. Next week is busy. We have the PTO bounce batch with multiple bounce house, houses, hot dogs and loon animals and face painting to invite all the families in. We do really get a great turnout for those, but not all families can make it. And fortunately for us, the bounce houses are available on Friday as well. So we're gonna integrate those right into Spring Fest. And so we'll still do our usual stations centered around the garden, but the kids also get a bounce house station too. For our committees, not many have met since the last board report. So both school improvement will meet in May as well as parent advisory committee. So both of those groups will meet and I'll report on in June. But the one that did meet was curriculum council. And if you remember, the professional development committee is now kind of integrated into curriculum council and that's been working pretty well. We did have an email go out to people who are interested in leading professional development next year. If you remember, we have our after-outwear sessions because we have experts in our own district who are sharing and leading that work. It doesn't mean we don't still have professional development outside sources as well, but we have really fabulous staff here who are sharing their profession and their expertise. So it was great to hear lots of people interested in doing that. And then a survey will go out next week for all staff about which topics are most interested in. That survey is reviewed by curriculum council. The exciting thing is it's in alignment with our school improvement efforts. It's also in alignment with our strategic goals. And so the overarching priorities we have on there are also what you're seeing on that survey. So it's really cool to see all those pieces come together. Another big update from curriculum council is we've updated our star testing windows. We know that's really meaningful data for us as we engage in school improvement and supporting individual students. We always want to find that balance with overtesting. And so we are limiting it from five testing windows to four. We think this will still be enough to give us meaningful data to put plans and improvement efforts in place each quarter. But it'll take away one extra testing session that may be not necessary at the very beginning of the year. And then also we've adjusted the testing windows just a little bit earlier. So students are not taking finals and the star in the same week. And the same thing for staff, we're having those data meetings where we look at every single student's star score and whether it's changed or grown and, and what supports they need. But rather than having those meetings happen the same week that elementary teachers are also trying to get report cards out, it's gonna happen a week earlier. So we can offset that. So not only does it support the report cards, that communication is sent to parents, but then also it helps teachers with that capacity. So we're excited about that change. And then the last thing we do every year at the end of curriculum council is a survey within our own curriculum council. And we look at our district communication, our, on that team, our PLC leadership through that team and then curriculum review and advancement. And so we have feedback on how each of those areas are going and we set goals for the following year. And curriculum council is not open to the public because it isn't a board committee, but it does report out. But the curriculum council head will then reach out to any families who want to share feedback on math resource and gather that data and input. That's it.
Great, thank you. All right, we're down to the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions or comments about it? Absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion item, CSU 12 update.
Hasn't been a meeting yet.
And there is no WEC?
Done for the year. Yep.
Ellen and I have a report. We went down to the meeting in Hayward last week and the, the meal was delicious and we got to touch base with a number of other schools. So that was good. The, the theme of the night was talking about school boards and their relationship with students who may have some behavior concerns. And Ellen and I were, we kind of pretty much knew that stuff, you know, because we had heard that before. But it was, I think, a valuable thing for board members to hear of, you know, what the, what they're looking at as far as working with students with some behavior needs. So so that was good. So that's where we were. So now we're to the individual action items. The summer school staff handbook, let's start with that.
I'll make a motion to approve the summer school staff handbook.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Opposed, motion carried. Number two?
I move to approve uh, lacrosse non-competitive, sixth to twelfth grade.
Is there a second? Well, right, but we need a second first.
You have to have a second first.
Did you second it?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay, alright, yes, I think so.
So, um, so what's the season to start?
Well, I think that's to be determined, we're not, this is not a W I A sport yet. We're trying to um, reach students who are not currently participating in anything. And sometimes, and I know, I, I, I understand, you know, as an ex-head coach, you, I don't, I don't, there's a fear of, oh my goodness, you're gonna get my best player from this to play this. The other way to look at it is, we have a probably about seventy-some percent of our students who are not involved in anything after school. And you start new programs to maybe spark an interest. Uh, we have a larger population of Native American students who are not currently active in sports in school. Uh, this is a culturally relevant program for them to maybe connect to and get an experience in without competition. Uh, it's something that I think that is taught, you know, in our physical education department and in our schools.
The lacrosse is.
Yep, as games, um, and it's again, an attempt to connect with more kids and have more kids connect to us and get them active in some active sport. Um, it's non-competitive, because right now it's gonna start probably as learning the sport, getting together, it's not gonna really compete with other seasons. Schools that have moved to lacrosse have found exactly what we're trying to do, attracting different groups of students who are not playing a sport in that season. So, you know, Superior, when they went to uh, lacrosse in Hermantown, um, their hockey players were just hockey players, and they weren't playing anything else, and then they were like, oh, I'm gonna play lacrosse, cause it was, they weren't playing anything in one of those off-seasons, so it's something to watch, monitor, but it's also, I don't want us to be afraid, I want us to be courageous to start new things, to be competitive. Um, with providing more opportunities so students continue to look at Washburn as a place to attend for various different reasons, strong academics, safe schools, and a wide variety of activities after school.
Any Title IX implications?
I think it would for not, we're, we're not competitive, it's gonna be open to everybody, so you're not gonna, and right now, I think we have a really good balance. You'll make that determination after a few years, do you wanna go W I A, do you wanna stay not competitive, you wanna be club, do you wanna be a co-op?
Are there other schools in the area that are offering lacrosse then?
Everybody, everybody west of us.
Really?
West, west, okay.
I think.
South, west.
South Ashland has a.
South and west.
Oh, south and west, don't they, Angie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Northland just started a team, teams, so. It's a growing sport.
East is the lake and north is big, so. You're kind of.
Or I say this, I said south and west.
South and west.
South and west.
Okay.
I barely know the streets, I mean, that way.
Is there a way to engage, you know, as Jamie pointed out, like, younger age groups, like, what does that even, what does it look like?
I think it's something that, you know, I'll have Ivy talk about elementary and, and their exposure uh, during physical education at the grade levels, knowing that there's some thing that this is just not a skill that we're playing this week, you can get into this as you get older in the middle school and high school, so that's how you can build a program over time.
Is, is it accurate to say that there are less kids participating in sports?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, drops every year.
Okay.
That is a top priority in our conversations in the um, strategic plan this week, and also in our, in the last, I think, at least last two quarters, we've talked about it in the school improvement. Because we know that kids who are involved in anything, in something other than just school, do better in school. So, um, so it's a kind of a natural fit in our school improvement conversations. Um, it's, uh, so the first step is just collecting the data and getting some hard numbers so that we can show actual improvement over the years.
Okay.
In terms of participation.
So have we collected that yet at this point in time?
The data, not that I know of.
No, I don't, I don't think it'll be real hard data to collect. Um, cause we, we can in Skyward track who's in what sports and activities after school. We just have to make sure that that is a priority throughout the course of the next school year, that we're tracking that data and we have a list, so that we know what those, what, and then we can just pull it from Skyward for reporting.
Mm-hmm, so how do we know that there's less kids every year if we haven't been keeping track of that?
Oh, we know the amount on teams and, and coaches and budgets and. Sure. Some grow. Ultimately, we haven't had a girls soccer, I mean, uh.
Two years.
Gymnastics, I mean, those are just based on interest, but. And again, strategically to look at the twenty-five percent I talked about, you want them engaged in our community more than just coming to school.
Right, yeah.
You want them here, you want them staying, you want them participating, more activities might keep them here to the schools.
Okay. Any other discussion about lacrosse? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number three? It's a little slow tonight, usually you just whip through these.
I move to approve our.
Second?
I will second it.
Are there, is there any discussion?
Can we talk about how we came from there? I don't worry, cause I'm voting to approve and I don't really know that much, think about, like, is there any sort of background, is there any discussion that used to happen? Was anybody involved? In the hiring process?
Who, who was? I have the N and I. Your names.
Yeah, we're. Yeah, a little background, we're in, but we have two food service workers at the elementary school that are retiring at uh, two weeks. Um, we've had this position posted, um, I think we had eighteen applicants, once it went out to Indeed, they, I know you interviewed a whole group.
Set up interviews for quite a few, yep, um, had some candidates present and interviewed those, and then some um, turned down and some um, accepted and went through the process and made sure we had two strong candidates who are interested in being part of Washburn School District.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Um, yeah.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye, motion care, opposed, motion carried. Number five. I call for a vote to approve the resolution and attorney client engagement agreements. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, let's have a discussion about that.
Uh, class action lawsuit uh, is being filed twenty-eight states against some very large tech companies about the influence. Um, their companies that had on youth. Um, it was presented to us by our law firm to see if we wanted to uh, be involved in this, um, so I reached out to these, cause this takes years. Um, to see what her input was, she said that she would, you know, support being part of this class action lawsuit against Big Tech. Um, so you need a resolution, which is in the packet, and also an agreement that I will sign, if the board approves tonight, to give our legal team the authority to have Washburn added to the list of schools from the state of Wisconsin that are filing lawsuit against Google and those listed in the resolution.
Uh, do you have any idea of the number of schools, districts that are buying into this?
Um, I don't, I know that they've been, it's been sent around the state, I don't know how many boards have actually taken action, but I know there'll probably be hundreds in Wisconsin.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I move to approve instructional handbook updates.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Here's the resolution. Make the motion to approve the teacher appreciation resolution. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
And then I will read it. The school board resolution recognizing teacher appreciation week, May sixth through the tenth, twenty twenty-four, Washburn School Board. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of wild, widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers build relationships with students that enable young people to believe in their own potential, and whereas teachers work long beyond the normal school day to instruct and grade their students, and whereas teachers care about their students' social and emotional well-being and impart them with the skills they'll need to thrive in adult life, especially collaboration and critical thinking. And whereas teachers have adapted to unprecedented challenges to provide instruction while keeping their students safe, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Washburn School Board proclaims May sixth through the tenth, twenty twenty-four, be teacher appreciation week, and be it further resolved that the Washburn School Board strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and I'm just gonna do a.
Thank you for the features.
Call to vote to approve Diane Tetzner as a graduation speaker.
I move to approve Diane Tetzner as graduation speaker.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'm just picture, I'm done with that.
Alright, you're adjourned.
Just to let you know, we're gonna take the first part of the presentation tonight. Cody's gonna put that online tomorrow for anybody who wants to look at it.
Great.
Encourage anybody who hasn't received anything to contact the school, so we can get them something and you'll have the results in June.
Interesting, it's interesting.
There you go.